Good morning. I'd like to call the order of the Oak Island Planning Board. Welcome everyone that's here and watching on TV. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda? We've got new business. We good? Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, a motion to approve. Second. Okay, all in favor? Good. I would like to make a motion to excuse Carrie this morning. She has some business that she had to attend to, so can I have a motion to excuse Carrie?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Approval of the minutes from March. Gene, any adjustments?
No, sir.
You good? Reese? Go ahead. You good? Mark? David? All in... Can I make a...
I'm moved to approve.
In favor? Good. New business, Matt.
Actually, Taylor Davis is going to present our new business item for us this morning.
Good morning. It's my first time presenting to you guys.
Morning.
So I'm presenting the remaining area of the Draypack development, which is the community development you guys sort of heard about in the paper. It's now called Waterside, and we're going to talk about the UDOs.
Okay. So I'm sure you've seen this section of the UDO before, but it's the reason why we're here today. So Section 5.4 says that major subdivision preliminary platts and major site plans should be reviewed in front of the planning board and go on to approval by the town council. Major subdivision preliminary platts and major site plan applications are administrative approvals without discretionary standards. And per Section 5.3.5, the plans are provided to members of the technical review committee and all comments received were provided to the applicant. So the applicant is CLD Engineering, PLLC. Nate and Alan are here today to take questions, if we have any, for the engineers. The owner is Stars and Stripes, 3P LLC, and the project area is about 18.34 acres. The subject property is located approximately 3/4 of a mile west of the intersection of Middleton Avenue and NC Highway 211. The proposed development consists of 137 single-family attached dwelling units, townhomes, and has a gross density of 7.47 dwelling units per acre. The development is proposed to be served by Brunswick County Utilities. And just as a refresher, this is the approved master development plan from the SUP, and we're going to be talking about areas A, B, and C. This is D, E, and F of the preliminary platte that was approved or heard before you guys back in November. It consisted of 282 single-family detached dwelling units, and it also included two stub outs to the adjacent properties. The subject property is owned CLD. The Draypack PUD was approved for 719 dwelling units and an average gross density of 5.8 units per acre. In total, areas A through F will consist of 419 dwelling units with an average gross density of 4.6 units per acre. The applicant is proposing a maximum building height of 35 feet. That's the same as D, E, and F, and a project boundary setback of 25 feet that will contain a planted vegetative buffer in the non-wetland areas. The site is not within the special flood hazard area. The proposal includes approximately 7.87 acres of open space and 39.7 acres of preserved wetlands. All roadways are proposed as private right-of-way and will be constructed to meet or exceed the North Carolina Department of Transportation Design Standards.
Question. So on the 419 dwelling units versus the 719, with this being approved by this board and then the town council, it will be 419. It will not go further? There are no alterations that can be made post approvals, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So just to walk through the site plan a little bit. The proposal includes a 20-foot wide emergency access, which will include flexible delineator posts. The access will be constructed to support fire apparatus. It also includes a stub out to the abutting CLD zone parcel to the east. The project is proposed to be constructed in two phases, with 77 units in Phase 1 and 60 units in Phase 2. And the proposal includes seven-foot sidewalks on either side of the street and street lighting. That's that yellow area. Staff is recommending a motion to approve to Town Council the major site plan and preliminary platte for Waterside at Oak Island areas A, B, and C. Do you have any questions for me, or would you like Nate to come up?
I will ask for point of clarification. D, E, and F have already been approved by this board as well as the town council.
Yes, sir.
And because A, B, and C were not included in that original, that's even though the overall was approved, that's why you're coming today to make sure you have those approvals?
Yes, they're two different sections.
Okay. Two different sections, but not necessarily two different developments, correct?
Correct.
I don't have any other.
I don't. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, I'll let Nate come up. Oh, did you have a question?
I did. The two loops with the dwellings around it, verify what the width of those are, those roadways?
The roadway, Nate, do you have a hand?
It is 26-foot back of curb, back of curb road, and then seven-foot sidewalk. It's still the full width of the normal, like the original.
You might want to come up to the mic, so it can be recorded.
The roadways throughout the townhome area are 26 feet, back of curb to back of curb, just like the rest of the single-family development throughout the Waterside development.
And will there be parking on the street?
There won't be parking on the street. And, you know, I'll cover some of that in the presentation. I have a little bit more information in the presentation.
Because I didn't see, unless I missed it, looking at the small printout here, any no parking signs or anything that would...
discourage that.
Prevent, yeah, parking on the street.
Yeah, and that can be part of the discussion moving forward as we get past this part of the phase and move towards town council. If that's something that the town wants to see, it can definitely be incorporated.
I'm just, I know a lot of subdivisions similar to this setup, that is a big problem where people do park on the street. And, you know, if you get one car on each side of the street, it's hard for a car to get through, more or less, an emergency vehicle or delivery vehicle or that type.
Right. With the clustered development of townhomes, though, if you did park on the street, there's really nowhere to park because you would be directly in front of someone's car or driveway. It's not like a single-family development where you'd have a bit of a lawn area to park in front of on the street. Here, it would be instantaneously blocking people, and I think people would know. But that can always be something that could be posted at the entrance to the townhome community, pretty simply.
But to the point he's making, though, the main entrance from 211, that street, I think is what he's talking about. Your entrances to your driveways are going to be, if I'm looking to the far left, the rectangle here, those entrances to the home that you're referring to that would be blocking are on the opposite side. If you come down to your courtyard area, that's your entrance to your parking for your homes, correct?
This drive... Yes, this is...
Okay, I thought you were talking about the main entrance on, like, coming off of 211 where you could park alongside the street there. You're not. You're talking about in front of the actual townhomes?
I would want to include both in my comment, but mainly the homes. With the main road coming in, what is the width on that?
The main road coming in? I'd have to go back. I believe that was a 26-foot wide, typical...
Yeah, I think it might have been 27.
Maybe 27, maybe a little wider.
And again, no parking.
Yeah, and as Taylor was just reminding me, it would be covered in restrictive governance that there would be no on-street parking throughout the community, so.
Good. And then my next comment is, again, very hard to read, but the screening requirements, it refers to dumpster or trash receptacles. I didn't see, unless I missed it, area for dumpster. And with the layout of the houses and houses, you know, dwellings on both sides of it, I don't see how each individual house could have a three-sided screened area for their receptacle.
No, it'll be individual rollout carts like most neighborhoods. You know, I live right next to some townhome developments, and that's the way it's always handled there. And I think that's how Draypack Partners plans to move forward with this.
So that screening note wouldn't apply to the rollouts?
No, I think that was just part of general comments when it comes, you know, one of the checklist that were provided as we worked through the plan. And I think we addressed it in comments saying that we were just going to be individual trash roll-off carts.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now, Dave.
Do you want me to pull? Can I pull this up? We do have a presentation to show and run through that'll explain a lot more of this. I'm trying to get it up here.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On your overall site plan, east of Section B, you're showing a pond there. Is that a pond that's going to be filled, or is that just a...
This was from 2015, the bubble diagram PUD plan that just kind of laid the framework of this development. That doesn't reflect what's actually happening out there right now. And you'll see the site plans for the actual community where the stormwater ponds are now.
Okay, and then your southwest stormwater pond of Area B, which end of the pond is the forbay on?
I'd have to pull the... On the most east side. Is there a way I can get this presentation up here?
That's yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh, Paul just...
It would be SP-02 is the plan page.
Do you want me to jump and try to pull that up on the big screen here? If I can. It's not working. Plug it in and see if that does anything. It worked when we first brought it up here, so I don't know what happened. It's switching here, but not up there. Not with this on it, though.
Yeah, because this is, it's coming from the HGO, so it's...
It worked earlier when you had it. No, it goes through, it scrolls through here, it's just not... Now, if I go in presentation mode there, nothing's switching.
Oh, that's because you're not actually switching it on the thing. You're just switching it on the backside. So, um, hit the thing there.
Yeah, that's what I had found. It wasn't.
You're not actually... You're not... Just got to reset.
There we go. There we go.
Bingo.
All set. Apologize for the technical difficulties.
Could you say your name, please?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the board for your time this morning. And thank you to the staff, Matt, Taylor, for all your help along the way here as we move into this next phase of Waterside at Oak Island. My name's Nate Allen. I'm with CLD Engineering in Wilmington, representing our client, Draypack Partners, for the proposed major site plan and preliminary platte at Waterside Oak Island Townhomes. Also here with me today have Jay Carmine, Matthew Nichols. Jay Carmine, he's the engineer with our office and worked throughout this plan. So if there's any kind of technical engineering questions you have at the end, we'll wait till the end and you can speak with him. And Mr. Nichols is the attorney representing Draypack Partners as well. Taylor did a great job summarizing this plan, so I'm not going to try to waste too much time repeating things, but have a lot of the same slides. Here again, we're showing that 162-acre PUD that was approved back in 2015. Areas D, E, and F highlighted right there are the single-family home that's already been approved. It's gone through town council, and we're currently underway. Areas A, B, and C are what we are here for today, for this section of townhomes. This slide's showing the entire Waterside property again, including the single-family portion that's been previously approved down below in the south. The townhome sections, areas A, B, and C are highlighted right there, kind of sandwiched between all those wetlands and located just off 211. The project area includes approximately 18.34 acres. It's permitted up to 16 units per acre. Our project is actually proposing 137 single-family attached townhomes for proposed density of 7.47 units per acre. The green hatch surrounding the project here on the slide represents almost 40 acres of wetlands, none of which will be impacted by development activities for this project. The proposed townhomes will be accessed from Egbert's View Landing. That's a 50-foot public right-of-way that has already been designed and permitted as part of the single-family home development. Paved roads with curb and gutter will be provided throughout the townhome development. They'll be located in a private right-of-way. And as required with private roads, an HOA will be established and be responsible for the ongoing maintenance and repairs in the future. We also have a roadway stub off to the east of the property to some of the vacant land over there for any future developments that may be possible. Townhome development's typically associated with more pedestrian-focused layout, so we've proposed seven-foot sidewalks on both sides of the roads throughout the project. Resident parking will be provided with individual driveways per townhome. And it's been designed such that two cars can be parked in the driveway without blocking any sidewalks.
Can I ask you a question on your roads?
Sure.
Only because we've had discussion at this board as well as at the town council with private roads and then sometimes in these HOA-type, you know, the HOA doesn't anticipate the cost of repairs and things like that. And therefore, you know, there's an assumption that the town's going to pick those up and try and maintain those roads going forward. I'm just curious, in your HOA documents, because you'll own the HOA, I guess, until you have a certain amount of, you know, owner occupants, you know, that can take over the HOA. Are you building in any type of reserve or do you anticipate building in any type of reserves that are a part of the HOA dues that will provide for longer-term care and maintenance of the roads?
I can't particularly answer that question as far as what Draypack Partners is planning. I don't know if Mr. Nichols, at the end of the presentation, would have any kind of view on something like that.
I think that's pretty standard.
Yeah.
It's pretty standard that there would be, as a part of the HOA dues paid by the owners, that there would be a portion for the road maintenance, sort of a reserve built, to provide for that long-term maintenance. You're saying that is pretty standard?
It should be. It's best practices, for sure, to have some, both sort of short-term and long-term budgeting and anticipating how what your capital projects are going to be over five, 10, 20 years. Just like a homeowner would do with an individual home, looking at the roof.
Yeah, I know lenders are now requiring those reserves to be established before, you know, they'll really underwrite even a residence. I just want to make sure you guys are thinking down the path, not just develop it and then you guys move on, but it's a self-sustaining community.
Yes, sir. That's an excellent point. And again, I believe that would be the best practices for any HOA of this size, for sure. But yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you, Matt. So the yellow dotted line there is showing those sidewalks that we just had mentioned. To provide additional interconnectivity between the pods, we are also proposing two pedestrian crossings over Egbert's View Landing. These pedestrian crossings will be painted and signs will be posted on each side, each direction of the road to warn motorists of the crossings. But to just give people a chance to go back and forth when and if needed. That'll also connect to the sidewalk that's been planned as part of the single-family development that goes the entire length of Egbert's View Landing down to the single-family homes. As Taylor already pointed out, that emergency access that is also going to be provided since there was only one drive into this section of the townhomes. It'd be like a turf paver-type system once you're into the property. Right out on the road, there'll be a small concrete ribbon. And we were suggesting using some plastic delineator posts, the kind that can be driven over like you would see on a highway crossover. Or another option would be the use of siren-activated gates and knock boxes for emergency personnel. It'd kind of be whatever the preference is. Open space-wise, almost 7.87 acres, nearly half of the project area, is open space. Within some of those open space areas, we are providing some additional sidewalk connectivity throughout the neighborhood and just, again, to provide more connection for pedestrian access throughout the community. Mail kiosks are planned for both sides, both phases of this. They'll have parking, ADA accessible parking, and access to a cluster mailbox unit on each side. There'll also be additional parking there, too, for overflow. And we've also planned for about 20 spaces of overflow parking, visitor parking. So that will help address that issue of, you know, visitors coming by and not having room to park. I think we've provided a good amount of overflow parking here. 25-foot boundary buffer was part of the single-family development, the PUD, and it's also being recognized here. It'll be planted and landscaped and buffered as required by code in all the areas except the wetlands that will remain untouched. And that buffer is also acting as the rear setback line for all the townhomes in the community. Stormwater's going to be collected through curb inlet, surface drains, which will be routed to one of the two proposed stormwater ponds that are right below both phases of the townhomes there. In compliance with NCD-EQ stormwater requirements, the wet detention basins are going to be designed to capture, then treat, the first 1.5 inches of rainfall events. And then they're designed to attenuate post-development discharge below pre-development discharges for the minimum of 25-year storm. And the storm drain system, just like everything in the single-family development, is going to be evaluated for that 100-year storm event to ensure that no adjacent properties or lots would be impacted by stormwater. Proposed utilities are going to be provided by Brunswick Sewer and Water for the townhomes. They'll tie into the system that is running along the main entrance road, and it's already been permitted. Gravity sewer for the townhomes will also tie into that existing gravity sewer lines that have been approved and permitted for the single-family section. And that'll all be routed to the pump station that has been planned for the single-family. And during planning and engineering of that, that pump station was sized to accommodate for these townhomes, so it's already been planned and in place. And that will pump everything back out to 211, to the main lines. That's pretty much it. I'd like to thank you all for your time this morning and your time spent reviewing the plans. We're very excited to bring this next phase of the development to the town of Oak Island. And it's our hope that the plans that we've presented to you represent a quality residential development that'll provide yet another additional housing variety to, you know, the housing choices in Oak Island. We're happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Where was the forbay for the southwest pond?
The southwest pond, the forbay, it says, if you can read it right there, the forbay is right here.
Yep. Yeah, when I look at the engineering plan, it shows the forbay over here.
Did that switch? Okay. If you have the engineering plans, that might have switched since we had developed these graphics for the presentation.
With so much open space, bike paths not planned? You're just going to use your sidewalk infrastructure for something like that?
Sorry, can you ask that again?
Biking and things like that, just outdoor, not just side? Are you going to use your sidewalks for biking, pedestrian walkway combined?
I think that's the intent right now. And that's why we went with a little wider sidewalk than what's required by the code, you know, that, you know. Essentially, it becomes one big kind of parking lot with how close the driveways are and the seven-foot sidewalks. So we believe it provides ample room. And then those spaces within the open space, the sidewalk connections, those are more of like a suggestive design element when they come through and have the actual townhome picked out and whoever might be marketed for these townhomes as the end user. I think that'll kind of drive what happens in those open space areas and the type of amenities they'd like to include.
Thank you. Any further...
Back to David's point about the stormwater. Just to be clear on that, I think what he's trying to say is the drawing actually has the word "forbay" in that one corner, but it's showing it in that other corner. So I don't know if it's a typo or if a drawing is wrong.
No, the engineering drawings, which you guys have as well, those are accurate and they're the most up-to-date. When this graphic was created, the forbay at that time was there, but over a couple of weeks' time, some engineering changes were made and that forbay had shifted. It just did not get updated in here. Apologize for that.
Yes, Reese.
I wanted to back up to the utilities of water and sewer. The hydrants for A, B, C, D, E, and F off the water main on 211, it's been determined that there is enough county supply for all that?
Yes, this is, yeah, this has all been evaluated, engineered, designed, and permitted at this point. Everything's been approved.
And the sewer, county sewer for all that?
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Park, anything else?
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I do want to go on record saying that the parking still concerns me. And the reasons that it concerns me is, one, is can it really be prevented? And how is that? And who enforces that? I'm familiar with similar, as I said earlier, that parking is a constant problem. People ignore it, and then they call the police, and the police get there and they say, "This is private. We have nothing to do with it." And so it's just a major issue.
Yeah.
And I don't, of your approximately 20 spots for overflow, I don't feel that's many parking spots for guests for this many townhomes. If one person has a get-together, every one of those spots could be occupied by that one person. And the, some of those being there at the mailboxes, it sounded like they weren't all reserved for the mailbox, so it could be that people are parking there that are visiting houses, and now someone coming to the mailbox has nowhere to park to get out and get their mail, so they're parked in the street, blocking the street to be able to get to the mailbox. So I just want to go on record that that is still a major concern of mine. And then the other thing I'd like to be on record, as I said, and I noticed in the, in the previous phase, is the, I just don't like the one-way-in, one-way-out in case of an incident that is blocking everything, so, but that's all I have.
I understand the concern for the parking. I believe we have provided a pretty good amount of overflow parking. We could go back and discuss and see if there is additional room for more. We can definitely look at that. I think there are some spots that could be utilized, especially if we work with planning staff on maybe relaxing some things in areas to allow that to happen. But as far as the on-street parking, I have a hard time thinking that that will really be an issue just because of the way townhome development is and the way the park, the driveways are. You would, if you were coming to visit someone and you had to park out in the street, your only option is to park either in front of their driveway, or you would be directly in someone's driveway as well, which I think that would just be policed by community at that point and neighbors themselves. I know that's definitely a thing that happens in single-family homes where you have the opportunity to pull up in front of people's yards and parking yards and on sidewalks. I don't see that happening as often in this type of situation. But again, we can go back to the drawing board and look at any additional spaces that we might be able to squeeze in here to help with that, so.
And I understand your, you know, point of the driveways and the limited areas, but, you know, I've witnessed in these situations where the person living there is having the get-together, so people parked in their driveway where their neighbors on both sides, they're all friends, so they're invited. Other people showing up, "Well, just park in front of our driveways. We're not going anywhere. We're all here at the get-together." So then they're in the street, and it's two or three houses that has cars in front of their driveways in the street, so.
I think we'll try to attack it with as many things as we can, get more parking possible for visitors, signage. But beyond that, I mean, aside from building an entire commercial parking lot for townhome developments, which is just not going to be an option here, you know, I think we have to rely on a community as a whole to try to work towards pushing those requirements with the HOA and.
And, you know, I think if you have strict enforcement that can be taken place, and I'm familiar with some of these that do have strict enforcement. You're there five minutes, they've caught you. And then I have others, like I say, that they do the finger pointing and nobody wants to enforce it.
And I would also point out, you know, the single-family development does have an amenity center planned for it eventually, which I assume will be more of a commercial parking lot situation with some decent parking. So hopefully, you know, when the single family is online first, hopefully that'll be available when people do come. It can also be utilized as a, hey, you know, hop in the car, park down there, we'll pick you up, or, you know, we have sidewalks that connect the entire community as well.
So are these one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units? What are these?
I believe it is, the exact unit hasn't been chosen yet, you know? It's going to follow this layout and the size, you know, they can't get bigger than this. These are the lots that we're plating. But the owners right now aren't sure. They don't, they don't know, you know, this could be marketed towards an older population, and it would change, you know, the type of unit that they're going to put into here. But I would assume it's going to be no more than a three-bedroom, probably two-to-three-bedroom units.
So are there gar, so is the max parking then for each home, is it just two cars or could it be four, meaning you would have two in a garage structure and then two that would be more roadside?
I don't know that Oak Island, do you guys count garage parking as parking? You do?
Yes.
Okay, because a lot of places don't even let us count it anymore because everyone just uses their garage for storage nowadays, it seems, but.
But these are garage units or to be determined?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. They do, they will have garages. They are showing garages on these right now.
So potentially then you could have four parking spaces for each unit? Or would this just be a single?
It would probably be three. It would probably be a one-car garage with two spaces of, the driveways proposed are 18 feet wide, 20 feet deep.
So Matt, we have, the town does an assess, a determination of habitable rooms, and that's what drives the parking requirement for each individual residence. Is that not applicable here or is that just different given this type of off-island development?
Yes, I don't know the exact correct, but off-island, mainland residential parking calculations are treated differently than for the island.
Okay, so they, they can have, if they have four habitable rooms, meaning you could have three bedrooms in one open common area upstairs or downstairs that could count as, potentially, you're saying that if there are four, for example, and you could only fit three, then that would still be? Okay, so while you're looking that one up, the other question I had real quick, oh, are you going to allow rentals? Is the HOA going to allow individual units to be rentals? I know that the North Carolina law would prohibit us from saying you can't with the residents. I didn't know with an HOA overlay whether you're still bound by that state, you know, that court, I mean, that case.
Yeah, I do not know that at this point in the development as the engineers representing them. We haven't been privy to that information. And again, it kind of goes back to, they don't really, they're not sure what the end user is going to be. They're going to be looking at that as the single-family homes develop in this area and seeing what kind of product they want to put up here before.
So it could be a full rental community?
Right.
If they wanted it to be? Meaning, we just, the town council just approved one where it's, it's a community very similar in terms of the density, but instead of, you don't buy them, they're just long-term rentals or just rentals? That could be the product that is ultimately chosen for this as well?
If that is permitted within the town of Oak Island, I assume it could be, and if I can get, you know, I can, I don't have that answer for you right now, but I can go get that and, you know, report back to the planning staff to let you guys know.
Well, the tentacles, and again, we're not trying to belabor the parking, but it is a problem. And with Airbnbs and all that, you don't know whether a two-bedroom is being occupied by two, you know, individuals, four individuals, whether they're cramming, you know, a full family that, you know, so the parking ends up being always an unanticipated issue that we struggle with. Again, it's an HOA, it's going to be contained within that. It's just something to anticipate if it can be a rental, you know, or if someone can put a private residence in Airbnb, just anticipating those things in your HOA documents and things like that.
Yeah, understood.
To answer your question, Mr. Gilbert, the mainland dwelling residential parking calculation is two off-street parking spaces for up to five habitable rooms and then an additional space per habitable room. So you would, with these guys having three spaces, they would be able to have up to six habitable rooms.
Okay, good. Okay. All right, thank you.
Which a three-bedroom townhome with a, with a, with a living room would basically be four.
Would be able to be, okay, good. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Sorry to digress.
No, no, thank you. Appreciate it.
You good?
Anything else?
Gene?
I'm good.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Do we need to read it? I made a, I make a motion to approve the proposed major subdivision preliminary plat and major site plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you all again. I appreciate it.
Okay, we should be going on to old business.
Supplemental.
Supplemental regulations. And Matt, we're starting on 7.2.
Yes, sir. I believe we're up to 7 points. We did artisan workshop was the last one we talked about last month, so you guys can continue from there. And we'll, I will say we have a, I believe the chair also, we have a little bit of a hard out around at least by 11:00, so let's work through, you guys discuss and give comments on what we can get through today, and we'll continue from there.
Sounds good. So 7.2, anyone have any, Gene? Any discussion points, issues? No?
Mr. Simmons?
Yeah.
All right?
No.
Yes, sir.
So with the current regulations and verbiage?
Question real quick. So we submitted our suggested questions, comments, concerns, those have not been incorporated, correct?
Correct, not in this. This is as is now.
Okay.
Previous comments, Matt has some copies of our previous comments and.
Yeah, if anybody needs a copy of the previous comments that we gave out last time, I have some extras up here in case you didn't bring it for this one.
If you don't mind. Sorry, I thought I grabbed mine.
But yes, the workflow of this will be, because we received comments from a few planning board members, we'll, we'll work through all of the supplemental regulations that you guys want to discuss, and then that's what we'll take back. So the cumulative effect of all of those discussion items will be what gets turned into a red line draft at the end of this process. Yes, sir.
Down to 7.24, gun ranges closed air and open. We see in front of us the current verbiage, regulations. Have any discussion points on these?
Again, do we need to go over those that are in this, these compiled comments here? Are you gonna, I'm sorry, I'm still.
No, it's okay. I, I think since we only got comments from a few of the planning board members, it would be worth, if you submitted comments for a particular item, bringing it up for discussion as a part of this, so we can take the, the comments of the entire board as we work through a red line draft.
Do we want to just under 7.24? Because this is, this is all three, I think you had three come back, this is all comments from all three. Do we want to just take these then? And then, because I couldn't tell you exactly right now without my notes, I apologize if I didn't bring them. Which would be mine and which would be someone else's?
Yeah, so I think, you know, you have those comment documents now, if, anything that you want to bring up to the board for discussion from those comments, we would want to hear from the entirety of the board before we start a red line draft.
Yep.
You want to take them just one at a time?
Yes.
Well, I mean, like the first one there, I wouldn't mind, but the stipulation, the compliance with concealed carry law for weapons taken in and out.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, most gun ranges make you bring your gun unloaded and locked and in a case, so that's already taken care of on that part.
When you say most, is it required or is it?
I was going to say, I think it's an.
It's required at the gun ranges that they be in locked, in a holster, or in a case before you enter.
Yeah, unlocked, unloaded.
Unloaded.
And unloaded and locked.
All right. And most of these gun ranges do have state regulations that they have to follow at the range.
As well as insurance regulations.
Yes.
And if it, if it helps the board, I've had the pleasure of working in a jurisdiction that did have, it was a large county and had several go-through permitting. The ATF and the NRA, EPA and OSHA regulations for, especially outdoor gun ranges are very substantial, so it goes into the.
Very comprehensive.
Yeah, it goes into the berms, the safety, everything, so I do think that having that as the first one in there, you know, goes well above and beyond what most people would expect from a safety aspect, from a, from an outdoor gun range especially.
So then this first point about the distance, schools, childcare, churches, the comment of increasing it from the 500, is that, is that necessary given the requirements that these gun ranges have?
They already have, even the distance for state, you cannot be within what, it's over 500.
500, because that's.
It's at least 500.
Yeah, and the, so with the, in addition to the 500-feet buffer that's set locally for these things, when you design an outdoor gun range, they, they take a look at kind of the maximum trajectory of basically all the angles of fire and set up distances and berm structures for that to, to help with that safety concern. 500 feet certainly could be increased if the board thinks that it's necessary, but the, it wouldn't necessarily be out of a safety issue because when you design it to those standards of point one, that kind of takes into account basically the best practices of all the, the safety regulations for it. It would be more of, if this board were concerned about, you know, the nuisance of noise and things like that from a, from a gun range, so.
So I don't have any experience in this area, so forgive me for, I do have a friend who owns property that abuts a, a shooting range, and he's trying to develop that, it's not in town council, I mean, the town of Oak Island, but it's proximate, and he's trying to market that land for like a long-term residence or an assisted-living facility. Cannot get a take or be because of the constant sound of firing going on. And so he feels that because there's a firing range close enough, that he's now unable to really sell his property at, you know, the best use or even a higher intended use. So that, that's the only reason why I'm thinking, you know, and granted, it might be perfectly fine, it's just the sound, people got to get over it, but I just didn't know if, again, for schools, childcare facility, churches, those things get, that are more sensitive to you being on a school playground and hearing a gun go off in this day and age, is 500 feet enough? Or, again, are we?
If you're looking at the noise, it wouldn't matter if you're 5,000 feet. You're still going to hear the noise.
Okay.
You go down the roads, many roads, and you're going to have signs that says gun range noise area.
Yeah.
You just cannot, it would be miles before you could have any property available if you did it that way. The noise alone is going to carry.
Okay.
But I mean, to your point, it does cause a problem because I know, if I'm not mistaken, in Brunswick County, you can fire a gun at any time. It's not illegal to fire a gun. And a person has, shoots behind the school in Bolivia, and every time a gun goes off, they go into a lockdown.
Yeah.
And they know, they know who it is and there's nothing they can do. So the noise does travel. I mean, I used to, like the racetracks and stuff, I lived five miles from Ace Speedway, and I could still hear them racing on Friday night, so the noise does carry.
And remind me, it says closed is approved in the CLD, so an open, which is more of what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
And an open air, this would be in the industrial? Is that where this would be? And I apologize, I don't have that table right in front of me.
Yeah, that's correct. We do have one existing gun range in the town that is in the CLD, so that one does already exist. But I believe with the most recent updates, we, we limited the open, the outdoor gun ranges to just the industrial district as well.
Thank you.
One thing that can help attenuate noise beyond, beyond distance, if the board was so inclined to require a type D buffer yard, which is an earthen berm type of buffer yard, sometimes that additional earthen planting can't, can't help with noise to some degree. Now, the standard for that is a maximum of six feet, but that's still a pretty decent-sized berm when you, when you slope that out.
And you're saying that's current or we could go to that? And you're saying that's current or we could go to that as a, a way to provide some additional insulation?
I, I think it's a way you could provide some additional screening and protection. If you want to specify that in the supplemental regulation, that it shall be a type D per code, that, that, that is a bermed.
I would be in favor of that. I, I do. Even though they're not that prevalent, you know, across, you know, I think just safeguarding by having some additional berm to reduce the noise and the stigma of it. It's just, I, I have no problem with guns. I really don't. I have no problem with the, but I know a lot of people. It is a sensitive topic. So any comments on the, increasing the, the buffer?
So adding landscape buffers for outdoor gun ranges?
Well, clarify, a, a landscape buffer would be required. What I would recommend, i- if the board's looking to, you know, reduce the, the noise impact of one is to specify a type D buffer. Because right now our, our buffer yard has kind of basically options for what you can pick in our ordinance. Type D is specifically a berm type of buffer yard with vegetated plantings on top of it. And that's usually the, the best, an earthen berm is usually one of the, the best ways to, to, to deal with the noise. You know, especially like gunfire noise concern versus something that might be enclosed. So similar to what we did on some of the other supplemental regulations where the, the board said, okay, we want this specific berm for this, or this specific landscape buffer for the specific use. If you wanted to choose one for here, type D would probably be the, the best one.
And if we adopt that buffer, does that impact the one gun range that we have? Or they can stay as is? They don't necessarily have to do anything? Because?
No, they wouldn't necessarily have to do anything.
Okay.
Aren't those buffers only required when you have two different zoning designations? So if you're CLD up against CLD, the setback's still there, but doesn't the buffer disappear?
The buffer is based on actual land use, not the zoning type. So it's not buffered between zones. It's buffered between land uses. CLD also does present, also does allow some residential uses within it. So let's say you're developing a, a proposed gun range next to some, some vacant CLD land that hadn't been developed or some CLD land that had been developed residentially. Then we would still require that buffer to be installed, because it either has been developed residentially or it has the, the potential to be a residential development in the end. The only way we would require a buffer is if it was already developed commercially, you know, and, and then the buffer would be, would be different.
Since this really doesn't impact anyone today, it's not a burden on someone today that has that land use. I would say for future, if someone develops it, having this type of a buffer that can help with the noise would be a good add for that.
So going forward, we could require a, a D buffer for gun range.
So we could add that to this section.
Question I have, to get it, a gun range, they gotta have a berm anyway.
They have to have a berm for the, for the area that you're, if you have outdoor gun range, you, you have a berm for the, the target area that you're shooting into.
But if we, if they have to have a berm, then we require another berm.
We require like a buffer yard.
A buffer yard.
That's right. Yeah.
But more likely the gun range, they're going to use all their space anyway. So they should already have a berm.
Potentially, but if they don't, you know, like your, your berm's going to be downrange, right? So if you have the berm downrange and you're shooting from over here, you might not have anything behind you. You know what I mean? So it could double, you know?
Well, we had a berm and then another berm.
You could design it in a way that, that the berm, that, that you install for the gun range could meet the requirements of the, of the class D buffer yard. We would just make sure that it's, you know, the whole site is buffered as opposed to just the, the downrange area.
Works for me.
So you need berms on the left and right side and then vegetation and then rear word of the shooting berm as well?
Yeah.
That's right.
So do we need to make that in the motion or just, can you take that?
Just taking consensus right now on the comments that you guys are discussing and then we'll.
Okay.
Unless there's any objection to what's.
Does anyone not see that as a? Okay.
Now, the last one they put there, I don't know who it was, is fencing required to prevent wanderers? Do we want to require fencing on the gun range?
Well, if we require a, a type D buffer yard, we're already planning, basically requiring them to put a berm up around the entire property and a vegetated berm in that, which would make it pretty difficult. I, I do think that there's. You know, I, I think to prevent wanderers, you'd probably want to post no trespassing signs on the property.
Is there a sign requirement at least, letting someone know if they're out for, to sprawl?
Yeah.
Insurance companies are going to make sure there's signs up and they're going to make sure that there's some fencing to prevent people from coming in. And the, whoever owns the gun range better make sure there's no wanderers coming in, because if they, if somebody shoots somebody, then you're liable. So there's other, it might not be in writing, but there's other ways that's going to take care of this.
So another question, then going back to the bill that allows you to downzone or that prohibits you from downzoning. Are we better, because I hear you and I, and that gives me comfort, that that's covered somewhere. But you're always subject now to those changing and you can't imagine they get more lenient, okay? But still, you're subject to those changing. Are we better to go ahead and make this now while we don't have anyone, you know, with this permitted use? To make it as strong as we can make it, regardless of insurance and other things, so that then we come back and, and we can't impose? Because once we do it and somebody, we're, we can't downzone again, correct? We can't change it once someone has it. So to me, on this type of area, not to make it an onerous area for someone to open up a gun range, that's not my intention at all. But I would say let's go ahead and require signage. So I don't know if there are best practices there, Matt, that's your team or that you can pull that would have the signage or fencing or whatever would help prohibit people from wandering onto the property and potentially, you know, putting themselves.
Yeah. So there's, there, there's state statutes for posting property for what you need to do for, to qualify as having a, an area that's posted for no trespassing. You know, you could craft a regulation that the sign shall be posted to prevent trespassing per the, the general statute or something like that. And then they just have to, you know, post the perimeter every so hundred feet or something like that.
Exactly. Okay. I, I would be.
And it sounds like they're having to do that anyway in most instances, so.
Yeah. Okay. Are there hours of operation limitations for an open air?
Not currently, no, sir.
I mean, I, I don't know. I, I feel like you're not going to necessarily do this at night, are you?
No.
But you could. Right now.
It would be.
Well, you.
If you have lighting, you could have, I'm just saying, I would say, why wouldn't we want to put in hours of operation?
Sure. You, you would certainly violate the noise ordinance, I think, if you're in the, in the middle of the night having a, a full like concealed carry class or something like that.
What is in the middle of the night? What is in the middle of the night? Six o'clock on a, on a winter night? Is that what you're calling in the middle of the night? Or are you thinking like one or two o'clock in the morning?
Our, our noise ordinance changes the, the decibel levels that's allowed at eleven o'clock at night. Yes, sir.
So then we're going to let that rule the hours of operations? They can start at, what, five AM in the morning or something and go till eleven o'clock at night?
I don't believe it's five AM. I, I believe it's seven.
Seven AM.
And the reason I don't know is because the, the Development Services staff does not enforce, enforce the noise ordinance. That's the police power that's dealt with through the town of Oak Island Police. If somebody has a, a noise complaint, then they don't call a, a zoning technician to deal with that. So I apologize for that.
But would we make the hours of operation through dusk? I mean, through dusk?
No.
Because you're saying they don't operate at night anyway.
I would think for an outdoor gun range, I would say an hour before dusk. That way, you know, if somebody is walking through the woods or joining property, then they can clearly see what they're walking into beforehand. And then that also gives, you know, people living nearby, if they get home from work at five o'clock, then they're not just hearing bang, 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 bang.
Right. Without seeing, being able to see where it's coming from.
Yeah. Well, I mean, people living in the area, they're going to know where it's coming from. But at five o'clock, they're not going to hear any more gunshots, because at six o'clock or dusk or whatever, you're going to be an hour back.
Okay.
So you, you provide a safety factor and a noise.
And i- if you do want to set hours of operation, I, I would set an actual time and not just say an hour before dusk.
I would too. I was just trying to think.
Not here this time.
Four PM.
You would say four? I mean, I think five would be reasonable. I mean, if it's closed, I don't, I don't have the concern.
I just think about daylight and winter time.
Right.
At five o'clock, it's, it's getting dark. And you, if you're walking through the woods or something.
Can we say something like four o'clock through, and I'm going to make this up, you know, March thirty first and then April first? It can go until six o'clock or something like that? I mean, that's when you have your time changes and everything else that allows for you to have longer days.
I mean, the, the, the board could take it its own pleasure. I, I think it probably makes more sense from an end user standpoint to just have one time that she set. And it sounds like maybe five o'clock might be the kind of split the difference between the two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, five o'clock doesn't give you a lot of safety, but it, but it gives you the noise protection from ownership around the area.
Yeah.
Four o'clock would give you the safety and the noise protection, because there's always going to be the one guy that wants to shoot one more.
I'm reading the hours of operation right now and nine to five is when they're open.
Nine to five is when?
The gun ranges are open.
I have no doubt about that. I'm just trying to say, do we want to leave it to their discretion? Or do we want to go ahead and have something that would be townwide and do it now before we really have this as a downzoning issue? But if you think five, you said it was what, nine to five?
Nine to five.
I would say let's do it nine to five then. If they're already open in those range in that time, then let's just stay with the nine to five.
For outdoor.
For outdoor.
Open air.
Yeah.
Now, if it's, because this is also closed air. I have less real concern for those things, because I feel like there are more noise buffers in a closed air. You know, I feel like it's, it's much more safeguarded, you know, there's more visual inspection. I have less concern there. But do we still want to have, you know, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock? Honestly, I would like to see, and I'm not trying to be overpowering here, I promise. To me, for the island, we are a community of retirees, young families, you know, some mid, mid-family as well. I feel like there's an hour of operations that we should allow many businesses just to be open during, you know what I mean? I like, I know we had like the tattoo parlor can stay open till two AM. Okay. To me, just consolidating those so that we're, we're consistent with those business hours across the island. So I don't know if it's eleven o'clock, ten o'clock or what, but do we want to set hours of operation? Or do we find that that's overreach? Because in some areas, like adult establishments and things like that, you know, I, I would like to put even some bars and things. I wouldn't want them to be able to stay open till two, three o'clock in the morning when they can generate sometimes an unintended, unanticipated out of business issue for the community. Any reactions to that? And I'm thinking out loud here a little bit, guys, so.
Honestly, we're on the gun ranges right now.
Right.
So indoor, indoor, there's substantial noise reduction already with the building and insulation.
So we, so if they're open till three or four, we don't care?
Yeah, you're, you're not going to hear anything from outside.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you for letting me get that out and think through that with you guys.
Any other comments? Two, five. Marinas and boats. The only, we have three needs limits on encroaching on repair rights of waterfront homeowners. And boats used for housing have construction and public health safety guidelines. I don't know who submitted these, but I'm going to open this up for a comment.
I think it was Kerry, because if I'm not mistaken, this was one of the. Didn't we add that to something? Because we, we had a lot of discussion on people living on houseboats and stuff like that.
You guys talked about floating homes, which is a, a little bit of a, a different thing. I, I believe, Mr. Chair, the, the first one you read off was about riparian access for adjacent property owners. That, that is set through camera regulation. You have a fifteen foot setback for riparian access rights. So whenever somebody, even your neighbor is building a dock or, or, you know, something out into the water, you're supposed to stay fifteen feet off of their riparian rights. So basically the property line shoot out into the water. Sometimes it's at an angle, but you have to stay fifteen feet off of that. Now, the adjacent property owner can waive a portion of that setback, but they have to agree to waive that portion of that setback. And regardless of a setback waiver or not, the adjacent property owner gets a notice when you're doing a project like that and gets the chance to object to the, to the camera permit at that point. I think for riparian rights, you know, referencing back as the ordinance does currently to the, to the camera regulations is, is sufficient at this time. Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm not sure the town has any jurisdiction over federal water.
That, that's a good point. We do not.
That's what? Say it again.
We, we do not. We're, we're bound by the, the camera regulations for waterway access and things like that. So I don't think we could go above and beyond in that instance anyway.
So I think a question related to the riparian rights, if it is a houseboat, meaning it's not a, a dock, it's sort of what I would deem a permanent or near-permanent structure. Is the houseboat still guided by that same limitation that, those riparian rights or not? You know, because since it's movable.
Right.
You know what I mean? It could, I guess, be within the, that fifteen feet.
Yeah. So what the, what this is contemplating is something that, that's permanently installed. So a marina or a boat or a houseboat docked at a marina. So the marina itself or the place where you're docking that, that boat, houseboat, whatever, is, is going to have to meet that fifteen foot setback. Now, if somebody's got a, a boat that they've anchored, you know, in the intercoastal waterway somewhere, we, we don't have any jurisdiction over that locally.
Right. And I was mainly talking about a boat that might be docked on a dock that does fit within that, that isn't violating the riparian.
Yeah.
But it's docked in a way for an extended period of time that's within that fifteen feet. Is the boat still governed by all that like a dock would be? Because I know you have to get permission to build the dock from your neighboring properties.
Right.
But if it was something that's deemed movable, like a, like a boathouse, is that subject to that same riparian right or?
I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I would think not. Usually typically the, the docks are designed in a way so that the, the access and the place where you dock your boat is within the riparian rights of that individual property owner. So it's, it's not designed in a way to, you know, park your boat in the, in the, in the buffer area.
I'm not sure that's right. I'm not sure that's right, but that's okay. I mean, you can.
But we, I, I think to, to David's point, we can't, that, that, that's a camera coastal waters regulation that we couldn't even get involved in locally in the town. There are land use regulations anyway.
Anything floating that is not structurally attached to a structural member, I don't think we have any control. So you know, your access to deep waters ninety degrees off of the waterway.
Right.
And you have to stay within that area on both sides. So pretty much, you know, there's a there's a, a line drawn, you come off ninety degrees and then you have to stay within the repairing corridor on both sides unless they sign off on it. And then if there was slips there and that's inside that repairing corridor or outside of it, even if they were giving permission, if somebody pulls a houseboat up to it and ties off to a dock, we can't, I don't believe we can control that.
I, I don't think we can either. That, that would be an issue for a state agency to come and, and deal with. You know, if somebody's encroaching in, you know, somebody's riparian buffer area or, or in their corridor especially, yeah.
Virtually every sport fish boat has two, three bedrooms in it, two bathrooms. I mean, you would, you'd attack a lot of vessels.
Let's see, what I'm thinking about, you know, up in Wilmington where they've got those houseboats tied up at the dock. We can't put, just say Blue Harbor Point, whatever, they decide they're going to buy all these houseboats and put them out there and start renting them. That would fall under this marinas and boat eminium, right? Because it's a marina.
Yes. So the marina itself would, the, the marina, the, the actual structure that you're building, the, the dock itself, the marina would. The, what you park there, whether it's a houseboat or whatever, that, that would. The, what you park there, whether it's a houseboat or whatever, that, that would not be regulated by this.
So we couldn't put any kind of restrictions on what they, how they would build.
Jurisdiction over it.
Anything like that. Okay.
Okay. Very good. On to the next, seven point two six, water slide.
I, I, I'll point out that, uh, water slide was actually removed from the table of uses and consolidated into, uh, outdoor recreation when we did the, the table of uses. Um, and we established supplemental regulations for that at that time. So this is one that we can.
This can go. Go.
Yeah, yeah. And I apologize, this, this was pulled from the online ordinance, which hasn't, uh, been updated to reflect.
Oh, I can put that three story water slide coming down from our top level. Okay.
Zip line two.
Yeah.
Seven point two seven, dwelling, single family. I think we've beat this one to death. So let's go on. Family care homes. And, uh, the only comment I see is needs limits of occupants stated in childcare homes.
Mm-hmm.
And family care homes are another thing that, that's regulated.
Regulated by the state.
By the state, by the state statute.
And they would determine that occupancy level based on size, common areas, things like that.
Correct. The only thing we have locally that they allow us to do is to, to set up the one mile separation requirement, which we, which we do here.
Block. Yeah. Manufactured housing park. Change insured, insure. From I to E.
Yep.
And mobile ma- manufactured housing units allowed in the.
That was my question and we answered that at the last meeting that they are.
Any other, uh, comments, concerns?
Just, um, yeah, just, um, really quickly, and, um, it didn't hit me at the time. I, are there any things, you know, we are in a hurricane zone, mobile housing can sometimes be a vulnerable, you know, um, not even just for that particular resident and, and their home, but the disruption that could happen to another. Are there any things like that that we should be contemplating to make sure that they're, they meet certain, you know, wind? Or is that to a, to potentially down zoning?
Because we've got a lot of.
We have strict tie down regulations that.
Yeah. So the, 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 the building code will typically deal with like the wind zones and the installation requirements for, I mean, even accessory structures over a certain size have to meet tie down requirements based on our, our wind zone signs have to be engineered to withstand certain, uh, certain wind loads and things like that. So that's all handled on the technical,
Okay.
uh, building code side of stuff versus the zoning regulation.
Seven point three zero, temporary emergency construction and repair residence. The only comment is any special requirements or limitations for temporary housing within flood zones?
Oh, uh, and yes, temporary housing, uh, within a flood zone would need to meet, uh, any flood hazard prevention regulations that are in place uh, outside of even supplemental regulations. The flood hazard prevention ordinance applies to everything uh, that is applicable in a flood hazard area. We wouldn't need to re-reference it here in the supplemental regulations in order for it to be applicable.
Okay. Yeah, everything should be good. Seven point three one, tiny houses. And I'm seeing three comments, are more than one allowed on a residential partial, which I would say no because we can only have one residential per lot. Setbacks applied are normal as a residential and is stacking allowed thirty-five feet? And if it was a two level, then it would be allowed.
So you can stack multiple containers on top of each other.
As long as they meet the height restriction, yes.
And each, and each residence could, each floor could be its own residence.
Oh, no.
No, can't. No.
No, it would have to conform with single family, like if it's in a single family residential zoning, it would have to conform to that single family.
All right, good. So, okay.
You, you couldn't just make a triplex or, or something like that just because you were stacking.
I know that there are, uh, what about from a rental perspective? Could, because I know that there are homes where people will rent the downstairs and they're not on the beach or second row, but where they'll run out the downstairs and someone's living upstairs or vice versa.
Yeah. So that, that depends, uh, so first, uh, we can't, we can't regulate the, uh, the layout of the rooms in a dwelling unit. So for instance, if, if, and that's by state statute, um, so if a dwelling unit has two kitchens in it, I, we don't get any zoning, say, ever, something like that. What we do get into is, um, are there two, uh, independent, uh, living units that, that are separated? But, and what we look at there is typically, um, you know, has somebody installed a, a lockout door where you can lock one side of, you know, you've got a bedroom, bathroom, kitchen over here, a bedroom, bathroom, kitchen over here, and this guy can lock the other guys out. That's when you start getting into, you actually designed it to be a duplex instead of a single family home. And we've had several people that have done that, that we've had to go back and say, you, you can't actually have this, this lockout style door here because it has to be one.
How do you find out about that?
Um, we, we found out a couple of times through rental listings, through real estate listings, property owners contacting us for information on something like that. Or sometimes it's even real estate people that call and, uh, you know, we're trying to get some information about a property that's either going up for sale. Um, you know, we have to walk them through, you know, uh, is it a single family residence? Is it a duplex? Things like that. There are some, uh, duplexes that were permitted many years ago when it was allowed in the zoning district, and those are legal nonconformities that can continue to exist. What we deal with is new ones or ones that were originally designed and permitted as a single family and have, you know, through, through some creative means been turned into a duplex, basically, if it doesn't comply with the zoning regulation. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seven point three two, uh, repairs, watercraft, recreation, rentals and indoor repairs. Any comments, any suggestions, feedback? The notes that I'm seeing applies to too many uses, but is only referenced once under automobile sales and service.
Yeah. I'll, I'll speak to one, the one hundred and twenty days seems long. So vehicles or watercraft to be repaired may not be stored on the property for more than one hundred and twenty days. And I question whether that was appropriate or maybe that was a long time for, you know, um, I, I don't know that we want the situation where people, you know, park these things. Um, and it takes four months to repair something because it does become a place where, you know, different wildlife, you know, uh, animals can sort of get underneath and around. So my question was, is a hundred and twenty days appropriate? Or should we shorten that and then allow extension by a permit? I mean, to me.
That's up to us to.
I mean, to me, a hundred and twenty days for a, a disrepaired boat or a car seemed long. Um, again, you can not, we can't go that far.
You get into actually doing it and you have part issues or.
Or what issue?
Say you have a part issue, you can't get the part in, or you get one part fixed and find something else. By the time you order and get stuff in, it can take up to forty-five months.
The norm is, is that a little bit, I mean, when we have our boat serviced, I mean, it generally doesn't take a hundred and twenty days for that. To me, I would say a shorter period, allow them to extend via permit. And then you can provide if there's an, I mean, you know, even if it's, but that way, again, it gives somebody the ability to try and move on it versus let their, let these, uh, vehicles just litter their property and potentially become habitats to wildlife and things like that that can, do we want that? Maybe not.
Well, my, my concern with the hundred and twenty days would also be that if you give them a hundred and twenty days, you're actually giving them longer. Because I'm sure from an enforcement standpoint, you got to prove, which takes a while, and then you've got to send notices. And so they're gonna get much more than a hundred and twenty days if it's somebody working the system.
And I know this, when I was campaigning for town council, this was an issue that came up a lot. Some people believe that they should, it's their property and they can have a boat sitting in the front if, in a state of disrepair or a vehicle, and that's their property. And they have that right. And others believe that it invites, you know, um, the wildlife issue and, and some of that, and that it's also a detriment to neighboring properties. So all I'm trying to do is allow them to do what they need to do, encourage them to do it in less, if it's a parts issue or something like that, which I do understand, to me, that's a simple permit. They can put that in and just explain that the parts have not come in and let's, let's give them that. If it's just they're not getting around to it, they're just gonna park it there, that's something that's not necessarily.
This is businesses, not somebody's property.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I, yeah, I just think, we don't, I mean, maybe we will have this happen in bigger businesses where they're really protected from, but so many of our C L Ds and our, in our residential, they're sort of, you know, they're so close together. I'm just trying to think of a way to allow them to do what they need to do with the intention that they're actually servicing it. If they're not, now they can put it undercover, they can do something like that and they can keep it longer. I think we're just talking about here, just, you know, um, well, hang on, this is indoor repair?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this says may not be stored on the property.
Right, which would, could be outdoors.
Which could be outdoor. And maybe that's where we just state on outdoor. To be honest with you, if it's indoor, I don't care if it takes a year. If it's in somebody's garage, um, I don't, I truly don't care, um, how long it takes them. That's their right and, and all that. I'm only just trying to think of any detriment to having something sit on a property for a hundred and twenty days. So maybe it's just vehicle or watercraft may not be stored out, out, you know, outdoors, you know, for more than certain number of days without a permit. You know what I mean? Indoor, I don't care.
I, I think businesses probably likely take care of this themselves. They, they don't want a car sitting there for a hundred and twenty days because they can't make money on a car just sitting there. Um, you know, parts, COVID, pre-COVID, there's stuff even now and pre-COVID that would take you six, seven months to get. I mean, I know it's not, you know, personally, I've got a car in a body shop that's nine months old that's been sitting there for four plus months waiting on one part, and they say they have no idea when it's coming. And, and it's not a, it's not a COVID issue, it's a new car issue slash they don't have parts for it yet. Um, so, you know, I think if a business is run properly, that owner isn't gonna want something sitting there and taking away capability.
And we are only talking here, this is all commercial. This is not on a residential.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
So are we good with this? Go ahead.
Uh, seven point three two, Valde businesses that in that, in that area, I mean, you can just do away with seven point three two. None of them are, are following that. So we're wasting our time trying to rewrite it. They're not gonna do it anyway.
Wait, say that one more time. I'm sorry.
We're wasting our time trying to tweak seven point three two because no matter what you do to it, the businesses aren't gonna follow it anyway if it's not enforced.
I think he's trying to say any type of repair work.
We're spinning our wheels trying to tweak these things because they're not gonna happen regardless.
Well, I mean.
Wasting our time trying to tweak this.
Who does the enforcement?
Uh, the town staff, the zoning technicians, uh, enforce these regulations.
Like, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's the difference, you know, indoor repairs? Yeah. I think this is geared mainly toward vehicular repair. Okay.
It could be watercraft.
Yeah, yeah. Vehicular, watercraft, jet ski boat, this, that, this. Um, you know, every, every time you ride by a vehicular repair place, if they're fixing a tire outside, then they're in violation. If their bays are full and they're working on a car outside, they're in violation.
But no, only if they're fixing, only if it's taken four months, more than four months to fix that flat tire.
Not, not according to point two.
Yeah.
All repairs have to be completed inside.
Yeah. But this is for an indoor repair business. What about?
Well, I took it that three point, thirty-two point two was the repairs take place indoors.
Correct.
You can store them outdoors for up to four months.
Correct.
But what we're saying is repairs are taking place outside to fixing the tire, changing the battery, all of those are.
But maybe that place isn't considered a indoor repair. You know, maybe it's considered a automobile service station.
Well, we, uh, I think what everybody's getting at here is we have several automotive repair places that have been on the island for decades, some of which date back to the sixties, um, that are legally nonconforming. Uh, they have been in place in their current standard of operation for many, many years. And I've even gone back to the, the earliest, uh, aerial photography that I can find that, that is back in the fifties and sixties. And you can see them there almost exactly as they sit right now. Um, so when they continue that operation, they continue their status as a legal nonconformity. So new regulations that we put on top of it, well, once again, uh, I think it's Mr., the chair's indicating, you know, they, they don't matter unless that use goes away and then comes back or is redeveloped into that new use. Um, so it is difficult when you have a longstanding use that, that, that's been there for, for decades and decades, uh, operating in a certain way because, you know, we passed new rules, uh, but the new rules, I mean, it was legally nonconforming. It was operating that way uh, before probably zoning even existed in the, on the island. Um, so it, it does get difficult because when we set these rules, we're, you know, we do have to think about is this, you know, we're thinking about new things that are coming into the town, not necessarily the, the things that are already here, um, unless they lose that legal nonconformity status, which is, uh, shutting down operations for more than a hundred and eighty days. Or, you know, if it's destroyed in a, a hundred percent in a storm or something like that, then they have to come back and, and, and meet the new regulations then.
Yeah. I, I guess my confusion is, is that indoor repairs, because, you know, for so long I've seen people change tires, this, that, this, outside of places. I mean, we.
In the home.
Yeah. Well, I guess, uh, the new Mavis tire, it's a, it's a, it's in Oak Island, right? And they change tires outside every day of the week. So it, is, is there a difference between an indoor repair facility and a mechanic? Uh, yeah, I don't know what to classify what we're used to seeing. Is there a classification for that?
Uh, beyond this one, I don't believe so. I'd have to dive into the table of uses to see, because as we talked about with the table of uses, there are several automotive, uh, categories, including repair, service station, et cetera. So we'd, we'd have to do a little bit of research into that.
Yeah. So, so right now, from that statement, I understand that all automobile marine repair shops have to be solely, um, indoor repair facilities?
Well, what I'm saying is I'd have to look at the, the table of uses to see what other categories there are. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we're not careful, we can regulate people right out of business.
Exactly.
And I, I'll say I.
Of course, that's, that's, that can happen.
I, I had the benefit of also prior to my local government service, working at, uh, working at automotive repair facility. And I, I did a whole lot of my work outside because that was the only place to do it, uh, whether it was changing a tire or, uh, you know, doing any kind of repair.
There's boats that won't fit inside.
If Mark had to follow these, he, he'd have to close up.
Yeah.
Simple as that.
Yeah, but he's been grandfather for years.
Yeah.
But that, that's the one that everybody goes back to for the parked vehicles and everything else. That's the one they discuss. That's everything. It all goes back to right there. A lot of it does. I'm not gonna say all of it.
Mm-hmm.
And he's been here longer than everybody else. Suck it up and be done with it. That's my opinion.
And I assume those that can operate are already, we can't change those because we're down zoning those. I'm thinking of the new that come up.
Yeah.
Like that, the one that you're talking about over there at Lowe's Foods, if they just opened, you know, and they already have disregard for, for this because this is already what it is.
But we don't know if they fall under this category because there may be.
Yeah, something else. But even to go to Teresa's point, you know, if, if, if no one's gonna follow it because we can't enforce it.
Exactly.
You know, it's, you know, that's like, hey, I can't get my bed, my kid in the bed at ten o'clock, so I'm just gonna let him stay out till three or four because I can't get him in the bed anyway. Well, okay, you know what? Those are just problems we kick down the curve. I'm not trying to be onerous. I'm just trying to say, for those new, are there ways that we can do what was intended by this? If not, then let's just take it all out, Teresa's point or Mr. Simmons' point. Let's just take it all out because we can't enforce it and therefore it doesn't really mean anything.
Or depending on what Matt finds out and where they fall, it could be that if we don't want to completely remove it because of the situations, like you say, where the proximity to residential could possibly do timeframe for outdoor. for outdoor repairs taking place. So if it's within the daytime operating hours, they're not out there past that doing work on it or something.
Yeah, that's back to Reese's point, if you're not careful, you'll regulate them right out of business.
You could look at it as a from now on situation. So if Minnican comes in or Pet Boys or somebody like that.
That's what we're talking about.
You could tell them, you know, this is the way we do it here in our kind of. Now, boys under the hood or, or Warren or somebody like that, you know.
Yeah.
You, you can't, you can't make them do it, they, they don't have the room to do it, they, they just can't pull it off.
Yeah, and, you know, I believe there should be some regulation, but basic.
You can't make it retroactive.
Sense regulation.
Well, I mean, I've always looked at it as what is their business? Okay, just like Mavis Tires over here, their business is changing oil and, and new tires. Okay, where's the majority of that business done? It's done inside. The one-off stuff is what's done outside, fixing the tire, putting a battery in. To me, they're still an inside garage, even though they do some stuff outside. You know, that's kind of the way I looked at it because you're never going to legislate everything out because.
You're not going to pull a car in the garage to change the wiper blades.
Correct.
That ain't going to happen.
Yes.
Right.
And if you get a AutoZone or Advanced Auto and buy a battery, they'll change the battery for you. That, that doesn't necessarily make them an automotive repair facility, um, but they are providing that service. That's a good point.
If we beat this into death, guys, let's go on and, uh, 7.34, battery changing, battery exchange stations. And I do not see any comments.
Yeah, there's, wait. 332s.
Oh, yeah, that's on, that's back.
Yeah, I think it was put on the waitlist, kind of like the solar panels, antennas.
Wait, which one are you talking about?
7.34.
Oh, there was a 7.332.
I'm sorry, I skipped over that one. Automobile service stations. And again, we were back to the same point.
Well, now this was parking for a fee, where you're just, where you agree to park your, is it here? Is it truly a service station or is that something else? Is the comment.
Uh, so this is contemplating, uh, parking, so i- if someone develops an automotive service station, essentially developing a commercial parking lot as a portion of that where you can store it on there. That, if you have a service station, that, that particular parking arrangement is prohibited for that store, for that service station. And we do have a, a service station definition in here, um, so that deals with, uh, fuel, lubricants, tires and accessories, except car washing, mechanical electrical repair. So that, th- this does kind of deal with, uh, maybe something like a Pet Boys or a, you know, a place that's just doing, uh, you know, basic oil changes, tires, things like that versus a, a full automotive repair where you might be rebuilding the engine or, you know, uh, something like that.
In 32, we don't really delineate to the extent of the repair. So I guess here the question is, is this one really a 7.32 or does it stand as 7.33? Or is that what she's asking? Because this isn't mine, I'm trying to re, does this mean that it still stays?
I'm a little bit unclear.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll move on.
I, I. Uh, 7.33, we're good. 7.34, battery changing, charging and exchange station. This will be coming before us eventually with the issues with electric vehicles. Anybody see any comments for this, any?
And I don't have an EV to know sort of what some of the nuance to these are. And I don't know if maybe they're.
If we have the technical knowledge.
Yeah, or if there's some thinking about the EV stations, are there things that we just? I don't think anyone up here drives an EV, do we? To know how they're sort of.
I can tell you that from the, uh, what is it, the Fire NFPA standards, there's none for electric batteries, charging stations, they're, they really don't know how to handle from a fire prevention standpoint. Best guess is they don't know. They, because the company I work for, we, we write franchise auto dealerships in regard, and you know, they all do electric vehicles, everything else. The charging stations is pretty much, you go by the manufacturer specs and that's the specs you go by. Battery storage, we don't want, well, we don't want to get into battery storage of these things. We really don't want nobody that repairs these things because if they catch on fire, you.
You can't put it out.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They make a 500 pound blanket that you're supposed to throw over top of to put them out. That, that's the fire prevention in regards to batteries and cars and stuff. So it's a gr- I mean, my opinion, it's a gray area that they really don't know how to handle.
Yeah, and I, I know a lot of jurisdictions do struggle with this, um, specifically, you know, places that look at implementing like minimum required, like, you know, trying to push towards having a portion of your parking lot be for electric vehicle charging and things like that. Uh, I do think you, you do see these, it's very rare to see a standalone charging station. You know, you see a few like, uh, I believe there's some Tesla ones across the country, but even in, uh, up where I live, the, the Tesla station is in the parking lot of the Smithfields Barbecue, you know, and they have several, uh, stations that are, that are for Tesla charging. So I think 7.34, 34.5 kind of deals with those criteria for if you've got a use and you want to set up some, some vehicle charging as a, in, in your parking lot as a part of that other use, then how do you go through and design that? Would typically be where, where, you know, zoning and the UDO gets into it is, you know, how do we arrange that within a parking lot? Uh, whi- which we, uh, we have a couple here in town, we got some right out here at the pickleball court. We've got a EV charging station that, uh, people in the, that are doing our bike plan used yesterday before our meeting. So, um, but I do think we're, we're pretty well covered under these standards. These are pretty general, you know, number required, signage, maintenance, accessibility, lighting, station specifics, avoiding conflict with handicap spots. So those are pretty consistent standards that you see across jurisdictions that, that do look at this through their zoning.
We're putting one or two charging stations at, at all our new houses. We've probably put 40 or 50 out so far the last couple of years. It's, it's the, it's the coming thing.
You're, you're just running a 220, a dedicated 220, right? Because each individual adapter is unique to the car that you're charging, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this contemplates for commercial uses. We're, we're not regulating for like a new single family, if they want to install a, a charging station for the use of the single family residence, they, they just meet the building code and electrical requirements and the manufacturer specifications for that.
Let's move on to 7.35, bed and breakfast.
All right, there are two comments on here related to limiting of the number of occupants. And mine is the longer-winded one almost at the end, and I'll go ahead and, yeah, I don't know why we would limit it to eight persons. First of all, does that include the owners or not, so that the people who are maintaining it? So if it does, then you're potentially only, because it just says no, show, or I guess, offer accommodations to no more than eight, so it does not include the, the residents. But I would ask, why would you limit that when you have homes on the island that easily sleep 15, 16, 17? And you're always going to be bound by your parking. And your parking is going, you know what I mean, which is adjacent to your inhabitable rooms. So I don't know why we would want to limit it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a great fairness point throughout the island. Um, you know, we do allow bed and breakfasts as a, as a use in several residential neighborhoods and we don't really see many of them and it might be because of that constraint. Because, well, I might have a house that, uh, you know, might be better as an Airbnb that, you know, will sleep, you know, 15 people. But if I, if I want to stay here and operate it as a bed and breakfast, I can only sleep eight.
Right.
That's a little unusual.
And, and the point, the sensitivity I want to raise here is, I mean, again, I, I am watching so many homes on the beach just become, you know, year-long rentals. For someone to buy a home on the beach, even in an older home, the lots are 700, 800,000. And so even if you've got a piece of crap home on top of it, you're talking a million two, a million three. And I think we really are, I think we are seeing, and we're going to continue to see if price increases and, and availability decreases, we're going to see more and more homes being purchased for year-round rentals. I don't think that's where we want to go as an island. I really don't think we want to cede our beach to being year-round rentals, okay? Because for half the year, they're ghost towns and, um, and they're, they're subject to crime and all that. And I think we want to encourage people, this, this would give someone, even a young family, the bed and breakfast model I'm talking about. It gives them a way to buy a home and to offset the high cost of that home with rentals and they're supervised year in, year out. They've got all the benefits of having a resident, but yet you have also rental income. I would imagine they still pay a rental tax, um, just like anyone else would.
And room occupancy.
So to me, I would think this is an area we want to look at and maybe even try and encourage more on the island so that our homes are being owner occupied with some incidental rental versus just become rentals year-round. Um, and to me, the eight-person limitation, I would say it's governed by the number of habitable rooms or parking or something like that, that, um, because some of these homes can easily accommodate, you know, 16, 18 people.
Yeah, and you're, and you're right, and I think a lot of the, um, you know, just hearing from the community at, at, you know, various hearings, a lot of the, the, the frustration with rentals is because they're not, you know, necessarily supervised by someone who's living there, you know? So I think encouraging that model where there's, you know, someone on site, you know.
To encourage something like this, let's take the eight person out.
Right.
What beverage could we put in that would encourage that going forward?
I, I don't know that we could add, without having thought about it more, because I do think this is worth us talking about or at least the town, um, talking about, is it a marketing or is it, what is it that offer that, you know, that we can offer residents who want to do this? I think taking it out.
Yeah.
And it's that limitation that you can't have occupants, you know, you, you can't accommodate more parking spaces than, you know, you're allowed and let that be the driving, um, limitation on the home because it's already tied to occupancy, parking is tied to occupancy. Um, and I think that is enough that we can do without giving this more thought or out, without the town coming back and thinking about how we encourage this type of model over a firm rental.
Yeah, and I can do some, uh, I mean, there's certainly plenty of coastal communities. I, I can look and see what, how they, uh, regulate bed and breakfast and see if there's anything out there that, you know, is designed to maybe encourage that type of use, if that's the, the can, you know, the way the board wants to go, absolutely.
I'd like to hear Reese's thoughts on this.
What do you want to know?
What are your thoughts on bed and breakfasts?
Be hard to fill them. As a bed and breakfast, uh, usually when you think of a bed and breakfast, you're talking about four or five bedrooms and a, maybe a family or two coming for a weekend, maybe four days. It's, it's, it's a, it's a different industry than a week at the beach with a, a family reunion or four or five families or, or a wedding as an event or a family reunion as an event. It's, it's two different industries altogether.
Yeah, I would let the market work through all that, uh, because I, I remember the big argument when they tried to do the motel behind, um, um.
The Oak's Lodge?
You know, the what?
The one they were going to put beside the Oak's Lodge?
Yeah, I like, the whole notion there was if you're not coming for a week and willing to pay these high prices, it, you know, Oak Island doesn't lend itself. We've got a couple of motels on the island, um, but I can tell you, trying to buy one, uh, we were going to buy one and we walked away from it because it, the walls are paper thin, the way they're constructed, you know, it's just not a good place to stay. It, so my point is let the market work out how viable of a model it is. Let's take out the disincentives to the model and then the town and through others and, and, you know, let them sort of work through, um, maybe Hallie, this is something that she can give us some thoughts on. Let them figure that part out, but let's take out the disincentive to the bed and breakfast. And to me, the eight occupant is the only disincentive we've got in the special rates.
Yeah, I, I just feel like everybody views a bed and breakfast as being owner occupied or owner ran. Uh, that's not true at all. It, it will turn into a full-time business right on down the strip, just like.
But they can already do that today and not have this limitation.
Yeah, so I would leave the limitation.
To me, that, do what?
So I would leave the limitation.
Why? They could have it as a full-year rental and not have the eight limitation. I'm saying if you've got an owner occupied there and you're offering breakfast and, and, you know, and you've got, to me, I do think there's a market, we just haven't been tapping into that market. It's not really a product that people are known to come to Oak Island for. And so to me, again, my own prejudice, watching just our block on the far west end, it is almost all rental now year-round. I mean, there are very few owner occupied and I just think that is not the way our island wants to go. So my recommendation would be to take out the eight person and then if you want to put in the parking being the limiter, limitation, let that serve and then we can come back and handle this or the town can in terms of how to create more viability for this model.
The parking limitation is already built into the building ordinances, you can only.
But right now, though, it doesn't, if you're using it as a bed and breakfast, it doesn't have the parking as your limitation. It just has the number of, if it's a family of four with one car, you could do two families of four with two cars and that's all you could do. But what if you did four couples where you need?
I don't agree with the eight limit on a bed and breakfast. It should be 44 for, or whatever, whatever the house will accommodate.
Right, that's what we're saying, is just change this to that.
With a limited parking spaces that will accommodate the number of, of people it will accommodate. I don't know why there's a limit on eight in a bed and breakfast. I mean, if, if it's got eight bedrooms or 10 bedrooms, it's usually got two kitchens. So you have plenty of breakfast to cook, lunch and dinner too.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I, I just don't see the, of course, this is held over from probably 20 years ago.
Right, yeah.
Right. A lot, a lot of that is held over.
General consensus is eliminate that and let the town and marketing decide how to market.
We're letting the economy drive it.
Right.
And let me tell you, if you look at the numbers, which a lot of folks don't pay attention to it, you, there's a reason we have a 17 cent per hundred valuation tax rate instead of a 42 cent. And the reason is because we've got a tax base that's in the, the billions of dollars. Where, where a town this size in, uh, in Alamance County has got a tax base of $2 billion. And there's a reason for that, it's because of the, the line of million-dollar homes, the first two, three rows off the, off the beach. And the reason those homes are there are worth that much money is because we have investors coming here to build these larger houses that rent for 8, 10, 12,000 dollars a week. And it's, it's all economics and we're enjoying that.
Uh, it's a double-edged sword though too, because if you live on, if you live there, your property tax is reflecting the increase in market value that those bigger homes are driving to a residence. And so for someone who is retired here, that increasing prop, you know, tax basis.
Yes.
Is a detriment to the resident, not, you know, it, yes, it provides the town more money in the coffers, but I'm just saying, uh, I think we're all in agreement to not go beyond, I think, take this out and just let parking be the natural limiter and then we can come back and deal with it or.
Question for Matt.
Go ahead.
Matt, I'm kind of surprised, and I don't know if you can speak to it at all, that we would have the ability to put these kind of limits, like number of people and, um, them having to register with the town when a short-term rental state statute prevents you from doing all of that stuff. And to me, the same, I mean, I understand him saying it's, it's two different beasts we're dealing with, but I think I could all probably operate a short-term rental and call it a bed and breakfast, never live there and model it that way to get around all of that, that's, we aren't allowed to do in the state statute. I see that.
And, and our definite, so in order to qualify for, in order to qualify your home as a bed and breakfast, you have to meet the, the definition that we have in our ordinance, which does require owner occupancy of the, of the dwelling, of the, the bed and breakfast that you're operating. And, and our ordinance treats a bed and breakfast as a commercial enterprise versus a, a short-term rental or, or any type of single-family home that's put up for rent, that's treated simply as a single-family residential component versus a, a commercial type of.
Is that by state statute that they're? Is that a state statute that they're classified differently like that? Or is it just our town?
For the bed and breakfast regulation is the town's regulation separates bed and breakfasts out from a single-family residential home.
It's full rental.
Yeah, that's right.
Is that something that we can look at? That may not be under the purview of this board, but is that something we can at least? Anyway, I don't want to belabor, we're all on the same thing. We can talk about this later, exactly. Yeah, sorry.
If I could jump in, we're, you know.
We're on our hard time for today. Can I have a motion? It's getting boring reports real fast.
The next meeting is June the, June the 19th.
Yes.
I will not be here. I just want to let you know, I got to go to Rhode Island.
I have nothing to report on.
Reese? Reese, any comments for the board?
General comment, what we saw today on that approval of that preliminary, that's just a sticking your toe, getting it wet a little bit. That's going to be happening time after time from 211 all the way to the waterway over the next several years. I've been harping on that for two decades. Sooner or later, and every one of those properties, every one of those houses and townhouses are going to be occupied by people that are going to be voting either here on the island or wherever the voting place is over there. And sooner or later, there are going to be a lot more of them at the polls than there are the people that live here on the island. And they're going to dictate how high the buildings are going to be on the oceanfront. They're going to dictate everything that happens in the town. The people who live here on the island, they don't have a voice anymore. I've been against that annexation for over 20 years, and you're going to see what's, what's happening now. We saw a part of it today.
To Reese's point a little bit, and I'm sorry to, but Matt, it would, I don't know if our town keeps this, but it would be helpful. When we have these types of projects come before this board, it would be really great if we had a map and we start shading in what's already been sort of slated for development, that's already been approved and slated, so that to Reese's point, we can start to, we're not looking at something in an open swath of land in a vacuum, but we can start to see the pieces that are filling in. Not so much to worry about that, but from the standpoint of being able to see the pace.
One more point on that. I met with the fire chief and police chief this week on some of that items. As we develop and put more people in houses that far away, that's four and a half miles from the nearest fire station. There was talk, Lisa, if you remind me about the development, sea ponds or whatever it was.
Yeah, across from Midway Plaza.
There was a, there was a promise of a piece of land in that development for another fire station in that area to, to kind of help with the growth. You know, if we're, if we're planning for growth, we ought to plan for emergency services to be incorporated in that growth. Been no mention of that.
But that's Brunswick County, though. That was not, was that Oak Island?
Yeah.
That was us, okay.
Keep in mind, the town of Oak Island, you can put one foot in the town of Oak Island, the other foot in Bowling Springs at the same time.
And then there was also talk about a fire station inside one of the on-ramps to get on to Middleton at one time.
Yeah, we're, we're working actively with Chief Price to identify, and, and this would be, you know, far future, obviously, but to identify potential beneficial locations should the, should the need arise for, because he's, you know, I'm sure he, spoke about this with Mr. Simmons, you know, he, he's, he's thinking about that far future, so we're, we're actively looking for, you know, where might be the best location out of the options that are available to us going forward, but it's definitely something to, to keep, keep in mind as we move forward.
On the map that he's speaking of, to keep up with what's been.
Approved.
Approved for here and there, you might want to also keep up with what the county has approved on the north side of 211. Not, not on into the county, just abutting 211, because that's.
It's all going to, that funnel's going to come right to the beach, and it helps us sort of keep ourselves reminded of all those pieces that are going to end up creating issues for us.
Good point. Mark?
I'm good.
Staff report.
A couple of quick updates that I want to make sure to mention to everybody. First, our, our new town bike plan kicked off last month. Yesterday, we had our first steering committee meeting for that. We had a great meeting with some interactive maps with the steering committee members to identify, you know, opportunities and obstacles to bicycle, bicycle traffic here in the town. So we're, keep an eye out for, first, a, a community survey that's probably going to roll out towards the end of this month. It's going to be open for a month long, so people have an opportunity to, to give us comments and their ideas for increasing bicycle safety here in the town. We'll also likely have a, likely in July, we'll have a, an open house, community engagement event associated with that effort as well. So I had really good input yesterday from the steering committee. The comprehensive land use plan is continuing along. June 11th is going to be the next open house for that. We'll have an open house here in council chambers, just like we have in the evening before, where the cop, the consultant will be, you know, going through some of the 90% draft material and getting community feedback there. We'll also have an open comment period for that later on in the year. But that, June 11th will be a, a good time for people to come and, and see what the, that steering committee and consultant have, have been working on for the past several months. Let's see, a couple of staff updates. Congratulate Taylor and Justice Herman. They just recently walked for their Masters of Public Administration from UNCW, so congratulations to them. It's really exciting to have them here on the staff. And also Bryce Taylor, who's our stormwater administrator, participated in a session at the North Carolina Byways Conference to talk about the town's dune infiltration project. They had kind of a session on innovative stormwater management techniques, and he was invited to go to that, and from what I hear, he did an excellent job. Just want to give Bryce a shout out as well for that. Other than that, no further updates at this time. Oh, last thing, town's hurricane conference is tonight here at Town Hall. We're going to have some presenters here, but we'll also have a, a couple of tables for our stormwater staff and some planning staff to talk about flood hazard prevention. Obviously, two important topics that come up anytime there's a, a big storm here, so come on out, hear what everybody has to say, and stop by and ask questions if you have some.
A couple of questions. One on the storm use. Is the town council taking up the no, the notion of what can be, if, again, beachfront or beach road, where there's just so much water that just sits on that road, but yet you can't plan certain things and that, you know, like even bushes and things like that, that would allow for the roots to soak up some of that water? Is that something that they're taking up, or are they, with that whole, that right-of-way section, I know we've been talking about, can you do gravel? Can you do, does it need to be grass or what? Are they taking that up or?
I'm not aware of anything at this time, other than the right-of-way discussions that's going on.
Right-of-way, which is, yeah.
Yeah, and.
It's tied into the stormwater in terms of.
Town staff, you know, we, the budget was presented last night to town council, and the, the hearing is coming up, but town staff did request funding for a town-wide stormwater master plan to identify challenges and set up projects to help deal with stormwater problems here in the town, so. You know, should the, the budget get approved as recommended, we'll, we'll kick that off as soon as we, as soon as we can next year, yes, sir. So it's definitely something that's top of everybody's mind.
And then one last thing, given that we've made, I think, pretty good progress through this section, is it something where we, what we've done to date, can we go ahead and have the staff redline that, and can we not vote that through versus let it all accumulate to the very end and then do it all at once? Because then you're dealing with three and four months of memory and all that. I just, I didn't know if we could approve this as we're going through each section, because unless we're going to come back to.
We're going to come back, because I don't want to send a bunch of stuff to town council in little pieces.
I wouldn't necessarily approve it to then go to town council. I'm just saying so that we can sort of begin closing chapters as we're working our way through. If not, can we go ahead and at least redline what we've talked about up through today in the document that you send out in the next packet, so that we can go back, all know what we've already decided?
It's, it's the pleasure of the board. I can, I can.
I mean, does anybody object to him going ahead and redlining what we've dealt with through today?
Okay, thank you. Absolutely.
Have one complete document next time.
No problem.
And we'll pick up, and then we'll pick up from where we stopped today. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you, guys.